Oh, I try. Where'd you go?
Same time, same time.
Oh, was it my ears?
Yeah, it was awesome.
Did you just, two of you go, or?
No, we took, uh, CNN.
Oh, that's my ears. With flights?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be on Saturday.
Hey, there's an article on CNN.com exactly about the topic parking, parking.
Did you see it?
Yeah. Did you see it?
No, I didn't.
It was on CNN.com. It was like, uh...
I'll look for it.
Yeah.
It was in article?
Yeah, it was about cities across America requiring parking minimums and how that's hurting development. Exactly on point with what you had last week.
Yeah, so... I don't agree with that.
And now called an order, the city council meeting of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Time is seven P.M. Opening prayer. Uh, we'll start with Daryl.
Please rise for the prayer. Ask what you've got here. Almighty God, tonight we remember Gary Wechter, husband, father, teacher, a councilman in this city. Modest, wise, temperate. We give thanks for his life in this community and for his contributions here. We humbly ask that your servant Gary be welcomed into the company of heaven and your grace be with him for eternity. Amen. There. Also, to follow up with, uh, Daryl's, uh, prayer, I'd like to share this statement from the administration. On behalf of the city administration, I express our very, how very saddened we are to hear about the passing of Gary Wechter. We understand this is a challenging time for him and his family, and our thoughts are with him and his loved ones. When I think of his father, I think he could be considered quite a renaissance man. He excelled in a variety of area, areas. He was well-educated, enthusiastic about government and history. He loved the outdoors, was athletic, witty, able to build things and committed to having served his country and community in so many positive ways. Now, one could often find Gary helping family, friends, and the public enjoy the benefits of education, enjoying the history of his home, and the best of living and working here in North Canton. Once again, on behalf of the city administration, I would like to, uh, express our sincere condolences and our appreciation for his twenty years of service, professional integrity, and proficiency as a North Canton City Councilman. His actions speak for themselves, and he inspired everyone around him in an exceptional way. I know he will be dearly missed by all of those who knew him. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks.
Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Wyrich?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Stride?
Here.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Six present, number Matheny is absent.
Motion to excuse member Matheny?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay, if I have a motion and a second to approve as presented, the minutes from May first and May eighth.
Revolt moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good game.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, we'll move on to recognition of the public. At this time, members of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker will be granted five minutes. Comments will be limited to items appearing on the agenda only. Uh, the rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on both screens. Uh, this will serve as the only road, warning for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises. Anyone wishing to, uh, speak tonight, please approach the podium.
Chuck Househorn, three oh seven Fairview Street, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I'm just handing out to you two items. One of them is a photograph of the parking situation we have over on Fairview. In that photo, you can see two cars in front of two thirty Fairview Street. Their driveway is totally open, and yet they continue to choose to park their vehicles. How then, what is an intersection? As you see there on the right, this is a little better photo than when I passed out last week. You can see Fairheart intersecting with Fairview. It's difficult to pull out of Fairheart and either make a left or a right turn. And this is also at the top of a blind hill, whether you're going east or west. So I want to give you an update on that situation. That's in regards to, uh, ordinance thirty-six, twenty twenty-three. I've also passed out to you a news report on the nineteenth titled Talking Canton, Burnaby, and that's Mayor Burnaby, updates rotary on city's projects. On last page of that write-up, Mayor Burnaby said, and I quote, he said, "The city made a mistake which dates to three-quarters of a century ago when it agreed to provide water to suburbs without requiring them to be annexed into Canton." Quote, "We should have used water as an annexation tool. It's why Columbus has grown." This is in regards to, uh, ordinance forty-four, twenty twenty-three, when you're removing this annexation requirement. Uh, I believe, uh, City Administrator Diorio spoken at this on length. And if I remember, because I haven't gone back and listened to the video, he said, "We really haven't marketed our current situation requiring an annexation." And I agree. That's the only way you're gonna grow this city. Growing this city and making it the largest water supplier in northeast Ohio is not the way to go. All we need to do is have a current balance of outside customers with our inside customers in order to subsidize the lower rates we all now enjoy living here in the city. It is a not right, not the right path to try and make the city the largest competitor with Aqua and with the city of Canton. And here you have one of our competitors telling you it's a valuable tool. And I've noticed over the last number of years, anytime they've provided water, they've required annexation. It would be nice if we had seven individual on council here, seven individuals, who would do a little with their own research and thought process instead of just following, following statements made by council member Revolt. That's why we vote seven people. If you're just gonna stand up here and just listen to the party line and say yes, stay home. Or better yet, pick somebody out of the audience and let them sit up there and say yes. Because that's what goes on. I've seen it up here for twenty years. They take somebody with backbone, knowledge, and courage and say, "I don't believe this is the way to go," and vote no. So I would not, in any way, remove that annexation requirement. Thank you.
Sorry. Clear for my interference. Uh, name, Kim Bond, address, twelve twenty Terrace Road Northwest. Uh, good evening, everyone. Also, I'm sorry for my attire, but I'm supposed to be at a volleyball game. So maybe I will be going straight there. Um, from, uh, the, the, mine was about the, uh, two, parking ban from two to six in the morning. Um, I was talking to other people in local cities, uh, well, Pliny Township, we have family and friends, Pliny Township, Jackson, uh, Perry, um, Hasslin, and Canton City. And, um, just to see what it's like for them, uh, compared to us. And like, hey, what do you guys do? What's it like for you with, uh, parking on the streets? Uh, some of my newer businesses, like we're near, uh, Eady's Fish House, so people park all the way down our street. So we know what it's like for people to park on both sides of the street, to where it's hard for you to get through. So we understand the getting through part. We understand a lot of things that go on and around our neighborhoods. Uh, but what goes on in their neighborhood? So what I was thinking of, because back in the day, um, when I worked up in Akron, we had events overnight because of the snow. If that's what this is about, then is, is it possible that I could either, A, change to, uh, certain months of the year, December to March, like when we have snow? Or, um, could it be something that they could, like the other cities do? Uh, they have a way of, uh, reverse nine-one-one texting when there's a parking ban? So we don't have to have that sign up all the time? Um, I mean, because when I first even came here to North Canton, I thought it was a welcoming package to get that ticket on your car because you didn't know from two to six A.M. you couldn't even park on the street. Because the sign that was at Eady's Fish House was not there yet, and then when I called and complained, all of a sudden it showed up. Then after that now, it's actually gone again, so I don't know why that is. Uh, so I thought it was actually being, it was gonna be taken down, but I guess it's not what's happening. Um, I, I'm not saying that, uh, because I saw, read some of the rules. I didn't know the rules before I came down here. Uh, but I'm not trying to slay into the police department, but I'm sure they could spend their time doing something else other than giving out five-dollar tickets from two to six A.M. Um, not that we are, I mean, which we appreciate the police department because we're not a dangerous city. I mean, I could walk around at two o'clock in the morning and I don't feel threatened at all. But talking to some of these people in these other cities other than Jackson, they don't want to walk around at two o'clock in the morning. So that I do love. Plus, our police department, uh, our daughter is now military, and she's actually done ride-alongs. So she knows what it's like for the police department to be around at two and six in the morning and what they do. So I would think that five-dollar ticket isn't worth it. Oh, and one of the other things is our, since our daughter is in the military, she won't be coming home soon for a little while. Uh, she's not coming home for the three months that we could pay fifty dollars for her to park uh, somewhere on the street for a little while. She's actually coming for a home for three and a half years for ROTC. Once she's done with ROTC, she will be going back to the military for another four years. So for the three and a half years, how do we make that work? Well, we've already talked about, which I appreciate everybody's information, talked about other things that we can do when it comes to parking, uh, because we're not allowed parking on the grass. We already got kicked out of that, uh, much, I should have known better. Even though our car wasn't on blocks, um, we just figured parking on the grass wasn't that much of a hazard. Uh, but we got enough complaints from neighbors, so we don't do that anymore. Uh, but we're just hoping that if it's possible to get rid of the two-to-six ban and just make something that would make more sense to where we could actually park on the street. So that way, when we do have people and a parking, like our, our, um, driveway can only hold two, uh, small vehicles and our, uh, garage only can hold one vehicle. Well, I have a work vehicle, our personal vehicle, she's gonna have a vehicle, our daughter from the military's gonna have a vehicle. There's no way that's gonna work. It'd be impossible. So what we're hoping is that if at least that got taken away, we could have some of our time where we could actually just park on the street and wouldn't have to worry about too many things. Thank you.
Can I get your name again?
It's Kim, K-I-M, Bond, like double oh seven. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council?
Looks like... Sir, were you wanting to speak? Oh, okay. I thought you were looking around. Okay.
Moving on to old business. Can I have a, uh... Yeah. Okay, so are, are we, do, do we want to discuss this first, or are we, we're just gonna have a motion to table?
Might like to provide color if you are...
Yeah, yeah, if you can.
Take it from the table.
So first, we have to, no matter...
Revolt moves?
Okay.
That thirty-six dash twenty-three be removed from the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter three-five-one Parking Generally of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
Okay, now we can talk about it.
Well, Ben had made some changes on the overnight parking where, uh, where, you wanna explain that, Ben?
Uh, that, I would actually, the changes were requested by Administrator Diorio.
You wanna explain that, Ben?
Yep. So, you know, uh, it, it was clear in, in, uh, the discussions, uh, before council and, and listening to other things that are, uh, from the public, that, that I feel that there still is, uh, some tweaking uh, that needs to be done with the section that deals with the off-street parking. So I've spent some time last week kind of surveying some of the streets, uh, and feel that, uh, this is, uh, we're perhaps not quite ready yet. So I kinda liken it to, you know, everybody talks about in government that all the people here tonight watching or at home talk about it, it's like making sausage. Governments like, politics is like making sausage. So, you know, the sausage was made, it was almost getting ready to be put in the casing. That's where we were. So we stopped that. Because I want to go back and, and look at the, the sausage, you know, and make sure that we got it to spreading. And I'm not quite sure that I'm, that I'm there that. So what I've asked for with council's indulgence, I'd like to, to split this ordinance amended, if you will, uh, to, to remove the off-street parking portion of this for now. I will bring it back at a later date. But I would like to move forward with the other two main provisions, which are increasing the parking ticket fine from five dollars to twenty-five dollars. And I'd also like to move forward with the portion that deals with establishing an appeals process for that parking ticket. So we'd like to push that portion forward, hold back on the off-street portion, I think. And I apologize for the tardiness of it. It's just, we were, I was away for, uh, a, a day at the end of the week until we could work on it over the weekend and get it back out to you. But I think Ben passed out a, uh, uh, a draft of what that would look like if you're striking, uh, that section for now. So, uh, I would hope that, uh, the council would, uh, give the administration the opportunity to, to tweak that, rework it, rewrite it, and bring it back to you at a later date.
I think that's a good idea. I just think there's so much ambiguity and, and honestly, I, I, you know, I would love to see the reports from the police to say, how many people have we taken it overnight? Is this an issue? Are we being, is it something we're paying attention to that we don't need to pay attention to or change? Um, do we get rid of it? Is it, is it time that if all the other cities are open and we say we're this community that welcomes families and encourages that, is it something we need to look at? Times are really different. A lot of kids are coming home after college and they're living with their parents. Um, I don't know. I just think if, if we say we're a certain way, then do we need to do things that, that, that mean that? So I, I, I think it needs more time.
With our one speaker tonight, he brought up a good point about maybe in the summer months, you know, parking out on the street between two and six, you know, that would...
Or the reverse nine-one-one.
Or the reverse nine-one-one.
If it's about the snow or...
Yeah, something of that nature.
I mean, we're really, we're talking about three and a half hours. A lot.
Well, I think, you know, as we're looking at this, I think we have to take it, take it into context. And the context is with this really an overall parking strategy in the city. Okay, so not just, I know it started with us focusing on the two A.M. to six A.M. Well, I think it, it has kind of expanded in my mind to, okay, we have to think this through. And as it relates to that, we must recognize that not all streets are created equally.
Right.
Right? And so we have to look at how it's impacted. So I want to take some time to kind of see if we can't tailor something that is more specific, um, so that, that those that are impacted, uh, with, with parking on the street versus just the whole two A.M. to six A.M. So...
And we have done that a little bit, right? Like some streets you can only park on one side versus others.
I'm not, but, you know...
But I think that was in response to not all streets are, you know, equal.
You know, to be honest, I, and I've said this before, you know, there's been, again, and, you know, I know it's not something that everybody, uh, is comfortable with me saying, but I don't have a lot of confidence in a lot of decisions that made some time ago. Not...
I don't have a lot of...
A lot of confidence in some of the decisions that were made by the city a long time ago. I'm not sure things were firmly thought out. And, uh, it's not casting any aspersions on you folks here. It's quite that much further that they would just do that without the implications of studying what is the implication of putting that ban? And I'm sure, uh, Mr. Osborne wouldn't mind me saying, you know, in looking at that particular street, Fairview, um, so there's no parking on the north side, but not on all of the north side. There's a fair portion. It's not a majority, but it's more than, it's probably at least a quarter of the street. There is parking on the north side. Well, I don't, you know, let's, let's think about how that got put into play. And was that a smart move?
Right.
You know, to do that at the time? I think we, we should revisit that and think about it a little bit more. And I'd like to run it through the process that we do with all the stuff that we're, you know, coming through. We did that and got it to here, but I think it needs an extra lift because now we'd have input from all around. If that's okay.
And new technology now that's really changed and allowed you to ask certain questions, get different data. We didn't have thirty years ago, twenty years ago. So that's helpful as well. I mean, you were even talking about how when, when apartments were built, you had to have an overhang, a structure. You know, and you look at those and those are the ones that are all falling down. They have the metal roofs. They look horrible. There's giant bees in them. And you think, now, why? You know, or now that someone has to repair that, and it's a really ugly-looking structure. So kind of, and like we've been doing, we're kind of looking at some of those ordinances as they come up. So I think that's very important as we move forward. When you talk about the city plan and what that looks like, how it ties with it.
I think, I think there's some pretty common opinions that the parking ticket should be moved from five dollars to twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have, I have no problem moving the redline version of this word.
Typically, uh, about how many parking tickets are there issued a month?
Chief?
A month?
Yeah.
I think that would be kind of...
Very...
You're catching off guard. It is in my annual report, Ben. You can...
I do have it.
Annual report that's on our website, available to the public, and you, where our statistics are.
More than we can find it right now?
Yeah.
Correction.
He goes to the correctional desk. He was not gonna give a number.
So he's looking for that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make an event, a, a motion to amend thirty-six dash twenty-three to wit in section three fifty-one point one-four overnight parking that in section A, we strike except as provided below and then strike B, one, two, three, four, and below four, A, B, C, D, and E, and then strike C, permit fee. So in essence, the entire section has been struck except that reading. No operator of any vehicle shall park such vehicle on any street for a period of longer than thirty minutes between the hours of two A.M. and six A.M. Basically what we have now.
Destroyed seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, um, and... Kind of a motion and a second to adopt the third reading of ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three.
As amended.
As amended.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
I think it was like, I did one thousand one hundred and twelve tickets last...
Last year.
Last year?
Last year.
Okay, so eighty, eighty-five.
So we had... Mr. President, I can also add, I found one of my, uh, monthly reports on my parking. Uh, April, we issued a hundred and eight. Now, that's totality of all the parking tickets of everything that we enforce. It was a hundred and eight in April.
Does that break down to overnight ones?
Yeah, it does not. Not for the reports that I see. We do not currently break things down in that manner. It's just the totality of parking tickets.
Thank you, Frank.
Well, how about we do this, Ms. Warren? How about we do this?
Yes.
How about you, you pick a number between one and twelve. Give me a number.
Four.
Four. And Mr. McLeister, give me your twenty, twenty-one, or twenty-two.
Uh, twenty-two.
Chief, I would like us to analyze April of twenty twenty-two and break down the parking tickets and see how many were overnight parking tickets. So it's a completely, it's a random thing.
Yeah.
I do, I'm not a believer in the needle in the haystack theory where I can pull the one aberration out of all the months. Chances, I did this down when I was in county, but, uh, if we pull a month and we see a statistic there that is, represents a high number or a very low number, whatever it is, it's probably characteristic of
Yeah.
the entire thing. So we'll, we'll get that and bring it to council.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's good data to have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-three dash twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter seven oh three Registration of Rental Units, specifically subsection seven oh three point oh four C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to amend the inspection procedure for registered rental units.
Okay, we've talked about this. Uh, it's gonna be moving from thirty days and then another one in thirty days to sixty days and sixty days, correct, Ben?
Just one...
One sixty day because getting, getting contractors and getting it done within thirty days, we were having some issues with that. So this is the third reading, and I move to adopt this.
Stride, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the ordinance, the title of ordinance forty-four dash twenty-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter nine thirty-five Water Lines and Hydrants of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to simplify water tap-in regulations.
All right, Jamie?
All right, hopefully I can follow along with my lovely voice this evening. Um, we've talked about this, uh, on a number of occasions. So what we're doing here is we are simplifying the water tap-in procedures and, and hopefully, um, hopefully making it attractive for, uh, those to, outside to, to join into the water system outside the city. And, you know, for what it's worth, um, you know, I appreciate Mr. Osborne's comments. You know, I too find myself wishing that we could do more with annexation, um, and tying it to water. But, and I know I'm putting him on the spot, but perhaps, you know, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, that can no longer be done. Is that a fair statement that you can no longer do annexation tied to water?
I, I would like to provide color.
Yes, please do.
At the appropriate time.
Yes.
And so, you know, uh, we, we probably don't have quite the meeting of the minds between, you know, some of the speakers and where we're at today. And, uh, I feel that having been in the capacity of what you've given me to do the last five or six years, I've become more of an expert, if you will. I've had to learn this process. Where are we as it relates to water, water customers, water business, annexation, et cetera? Right? So, you know, there were some court opinions in...
Right, so, you know, there were some court opinions in Tuscarus County. They also, you know, the city down there, New Philly also has a water treatment plan and they sell water and they wanted to do similar type of thing. If you want our water, you have to annex it. And that ended up being litigated. The opposing side said, yeah, we're not in your city, but we want to make you sell us water anyway. And the city said, well, no, we won't sell you water unless you annex it. So the court decided, and the court's ruling was that the city does not have to sell water to somebody outside the city. It's not a right, you don't have to sell it. But the city's recourse as it relates to annexation, if they were, if someone outside the city has water and they don't want to annex in and you want to force them to annex in, your recourse is to turn off their water. So that's the question that the seven of you and the mayor at any given time have to ask. So if an agreement that was, was signed, I don't know, in the last 20 years with an auto dealership on Whipple Road, and they signed it saying that if they were ever contiguous, they would annex because we're giving them the water, would you be able to enforce that today? The court would say, based on what we know, and this is not just my opinion, but I've brought these thoughts and concerns to our law department for them to investigate and they reaffirm these, this opinion back. It's not just me. You would just, you would have to turn off their water. Now, could the auto dealership survive without the water? Could they find a ready replacement? How fast could they get a well? All those things would have to come into play and you may find that they either will or they won't do it. But the bottom line is, is do the eight of you have the, the, uh, the ability to say, pull the plug tomorrow, cut them off?
Essentially holding a business hostage.
It's your, it's, it's a policy, you, council and the mayor set the policy. I'm just going to execute the policy. So we have that, that issue of, of that. So I disagree. I do agree with the article that was presented and I appreciate that, that, you know, three quarters of a century ago, they regret that they didn't move forward. So do I. And I wouldn't even hear, I wasn't born then. Some of you here may have been, but I wasn't. But I regret that too because all of what is known as Belton Village, all that, all that could have been in the city, but the city leaders at the time, so I'm told, you know, felt that that really took us away from what the character of this community was, that we were, you know, a bed and breakfast community, we're a family town, we're a small town, we're not the urban sprawl town. So that decision was passed. But along the way, this happened, I know I'm, I'm getting off point, I guess maybe, but it's, it's very educational. But, you know, somewhere along the way between, you know, 40 or 50 years ago to today, the, the legislative body in Columbus has changed. And I don't mean just R and D. I mean that people have left the urban area, they have left the cities and have moved to the townships. And what that has done is it has shifted the power politically from the cities to the townships. Because there are more people living in the townships than there are in the cities. And if you're an elected official, you're paying attention to where your largest group of your constituencies, constituencies are, it's in the townships. That's a fact. So when you look at that dynamic, what we find in the last five years is repeated efforts by this, these legislators to introduce changes to the revised code that prohibit municipalities from charging an outside rate higher than an inside rate. Now, as, as our speaker, one of the speakers said here, it was accurately said, this water system that we have was built along those lines that we understand that the people outside are paying more and then the people insider are paying less. And that's kind of a benefit of membership in the community. Let me do all mine because I'll forget. You write yours down if you're gonna, if I go too long. So the rules of engagement have changed. We understand that the courts have opined on this. We also have to understand that, in my opinion, because we haven't been able to construct a working relationship with all of our neighbors as it relates to economic development, our neighbors have taken matters into their own hands. And so they've, they've done an annexation agreements on the railroad line that runs up our, one of our borders. And that runs all the way to Summit County. And so west of the railroad tracks, we're not going to be able to ever annex unless somewhere, someday, somebody challenges this in court at the, all the way to the Supreme Court level and this string and balloon annexations are ruled invalid. Until then, this is the, this is the footprint that we have to operate with. Now, I know that at one point this city challenged these things and took them as far as the Supreme Court and we were eventually ruled that we didn't have standing because we didn't, we didn't have any property that was adjoining the railroad track and that we were claiming an impact when we weren't there yet. But that, that little venture cost us $200,000 to go to the Supreme Court on that one. So you'll find that the other side will dig in. So that's a situation. When we talk about places, you know, do they have a choice or not on the water? You know, we can look at Bursheer Swim Club down on 38th Street in Canton and they were presented with the same ultimatum by then, I think it was then Mayor Janet Creighton. You know, either annex in or you're out. Well, what was the out part? Do you have the ability to do a well, to fill a swimming pool and have it treated? Or you just want them to swim in a lake that has a cement bottom? It wasn't an option. So it's either go out of business or annex in. Let's look at our environment here. So there was no water purveyor. But what is our situation here? Well, inside the city, they have to have city utilities. So we're really talking about outside the utility, outside the city. And they do have a choice. They have two other choices. Actually, they have three choices. They can drill a well, they can sign up with Aqua, or they can go to the city of Canton, depending on where they're located. And these are all very viable alternatives. So when we look at, let's say, you know, some time ago when the water line was run out Apple Grove to do Spectrum Orthopedics, we have a fire hydrant right there. Right next to that is Costco, would have been Costco. And we were in talks with Costco about us providing water. Our fire hydrant is right on the corner of your property. We get, we have water that we can get to you. You know, we're going with Aqua. We're going with Aqua, well. So let's look at it from a competitive standpoint. These are the things that I worry about as, as running, running a water business. What happens when Aqua approaches Spectrum? Says, we can give you a better rate. And you know what? They can. They're a billion dollar corporation. They have a different set of operating objectives. They can go buy the business. Then what do you got? A filthy customer on that line. So we can look at Omni Orthopedics. There are disagreements on this amongst us, but suffice this to say, there was an alternative. They explored it. They built a well on their property. And right now, that looks like that was the smart decision. I can't say if it will be five years from now or 10 years from now or whenever. You know, we do know that wells fail. Well, the makeup of wells, I've talked with you all before about Dressler and that, you know, when that well was put in decades and decades and decades ago, there wasn't anything around it. Now that's all changed. There's all kinds of stuff around it and not a, a lot of it is very good. So we need to kind of relocate that water field. That could happen to any one of these places, it's a possibility. But those that are, you know, looking for alternatives, this is, there are alternatives. And as we know, we competed against the city of Canton for the Edgewood Development when I first got here. And in spite of that fierce competition, the developer still decided to go with, with Canton. And Canton had a better rate. So when we say we can just go out and impose our will, we cannot. You know, if we study the annexation, uh, how you do annexation, okay? So let's say there's, you know, how does an annexation work? Right, so let's say it's a hostile annexation. Right, in a hostile annexation, where the, there is at least one party that doesn't want to come in. It comes down to, you know, one man, one vote. So maybe I own a parcel, the city owns a parcel and we want to annex the adjoining parcel. If that owner says no, I get to vote yes, they get to vote no. Majority didn't carry the day. They don't annex in, it's done. It's not, it's, it's just textbook. So what do I got to do to get that property? Well, I got to get another property next to that property. So I got to get, I got to get up with two votes. I need my property and some other property that I don't own that somebody else owns and they're willing to do it. And between the two, we would annex this other parcel that doesn't want to come in. So it's a vote, one man, one vote. That's two votes for, one vote against. Too bad for the other guy, he's being annexed in. That's, that's it. Unless somebody's doing a voluntary and non-hostile annexation, they could just sign an annexation and join. You know, we do those out at Walsh. The mayor's out there talking with folks out at Walsh College about some additional properties they've acquired and getting them to, they want to annex. We get that. So if you want to, that's great. If you don't want to, then there's only one way and that is to force somebody in and you have to have more votes than the other side. So let's, so let's say that you were in that situation. It's two to one. You think, yes, we've got this one. But then what the other party finds out, because this is all public, this all takes time and a process, who knows? So we find out that the other party that doesn't want to be annexed in replats their parcel to put a 12 foot for 12 inch, as little as 12 inch ring or line between your property. So if I'm on the, if I'm sharing a parcel and we have one common border between us, it's very simple. They draw up another parcel that's three feet wide, runs the whole length, give it a separate parcel number, owned by a different LLC. And now our annexation petition is invalid because we can't get to the other parcel and we're prevented by this other one. So now we have to get this parcel in and we're back to how many votes? So we're back to, I may have two votes, but I'm only going to get the three foot section and now that other parcel still remains outside the city. And this can go on and on and on and on. The rules of engagement have changed. It's just, it's just not that way from those many years ago that we can, we can do this. I regret it that that's the case. We would like to have grown the city. We would like to have people thought about how we don't have any, you know, additional land for, you know, commercial development and we have to do that. So I don't think that that's the way forward. That's why I'm asking for that to, you know, I think it's a good move to take that out. And I think that there'll be some other opportunities that perhaps we can work together with our adjoining communities and, and redevelop adjacent parcels for everybody to dig. That's, that's the goal. But we won't do it if there is, if the, the, the threat that we are going to move forward and force people in. Because we know, nobody's in the, you know, since 2005, I can't go back too much forward. Since I've been around here, I, I could probably count on one hand the number of people that have wanted to voluntarily sign a petition to come into the city. If they wanted to come in, they'd come in, but they don't want to come in. There is a reason for that, whatever that reason may be. So I'm sorry to get way off. I hope that answered your question. I know it's probably way too much information.
No, it certainly did. I appreciate the info, so.
I think, I think we would do well to listen to the administrator's rather nuanced comments about the relationship between annexation and water. I appreciate Mr. Osborne's comments about annexation. Water can be a tool. But I would also argue that simply referring to Mayor Bernabe's comments, he's speaking about a time that has passed, that no longer exists. The city of Canton missed the boat. No one around this table, no one around this table has led this city in any annexation effort except me. The Walsh annexation, Sturbridge Village, Washington Square, Monticello, and as Pat referenced, our efforts out at Walker's Mountain in the corner. And in fact, I supported the city's challenge to Canton string and balloon annexation up the railroad tracks. It was illegal. And for those of you who've argued that the courts always issue good opinions, I would argue that when we went to Common Pleas Court, it was heard by a judge who was just six weeks out of the Canton Law Department, who had already approved a string and balloon annexation to the east, to the quarry. I highly doubt that he was going to reverse himself, even though the Ohio Supreme Court had ruled them already illegal. The fact of the matter is times have changed. Geography has changed. And I would argue, and I think the, Patrick has, has put his finger on it, is that we've got to reconcile what we kind of like with what we really need to do to keep this water system working. We had earlier comment from someone at, at the podium about the rates and how horrible they were that we were going to raise them 5%. Well, I think it was a buck, what it really turned out to be. Terrible 5%. What are the options if you don't manage your system's income? You're noncompliant with the law, you're noncompliant with the regulators, you're ineligible for grants, and eventually the system collapses and you have to sell it. Well, who would you sell it to? Canton? Aqua? Google Aqua. If you want to be owned by Aqua, good luck. They're a for-profit, publicly traded company that has one objective, maximizing profit for the shareholders. I can assure you that the protests of this council will matter a little, or the residents for that matter, matter a little if Aqua's supplying our, our water. So I think, I think the administrator is on to something here. I think I've established my credentials as an annexer. But I also realize that times have changed. And I think Patrick alluded to the fact that we're better off cooperating on projects than fighting. And if we can do that by amending this ordinance and tee that up, I think we're in better shape down the road. Sometimes it's better to have half a glass than no glass of water.
Pun intended.
No pun intended.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on this item?
When was the last time we used water to annex a property?
I, I remember that from the other.
Yeah.
That makes it pretty easy.
Yeah. I mean, part of, excuse me, mayor?
Yeah.
You know, part of the problem is, is that we have had mayors and councils that have not been willing, as Patrick indicated, to enforce the commitment the outside user made. We all like to be patted on the back and told we're doing a good job, but nobody wants to really bring the hammer down. Okay, if we're not going to play that way, it's okay. Then you've got to take that tool off the table. And that means the time's past. You've got to go to another approach. And I think that's what the administration is trying to get us to, is a better, a better approach that manages our water system to get more customers outside and to look for better economic development opportunities that will maybe out there. And if that means we have to put the annexation issue aside, I would encourage you to consider it.
Well, I thank you for the input, both you gentlemen, so.
So I have nothing else to add on item forty-four, or to the ordinance forty-four, twenty twenty-three. I would move that we adopt the third reading.
For both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-five dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 937 Water Rates of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in Order to Adjust Rates and Clarify Regulation.
All right, just like the previous item, this is something that we have discussed multiple times. It's adjusting water rates. Any questions or comments? Would move that we would adopt ordinance forty-five, twenty twenty-three.
For both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-six dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 719 Rubbish Haulers of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
John, let's talk about rubbish.
Isn't that Jamie's?
One would think.
Well, this is, we've discussed this before, and I'm totally for it. And I would move that we pass this. Moving on.
Okay, for both seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Amending Chapter 135 Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Service, specifically Section 135.02 Chief of the Depart, Chief of Department of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton to Correct Conflict with North Canton, with the North Canton City Charter. Hold up.
Okay, this was Dave's.
Patrick.
Yeah.
You were pointing to me.
Forty-eight, twenty-three.
Forty-eight, yeah. I'm following along, I guess we, that's fine. Yeah, so this was a result, again, of a review of ordinances and things of the past. And we noted that in, I think, the nineteen eighties, if I'm not mistaken, some, some point, a council made a motion to change the way the chief was appointed. And what we're asking, had asked for a legal opinion from the Law Department to analyze the charter and this ordinance to see which prevails. And it found, they determined that the ordinance that was passed by council conflicted with the city charter that provides for the hiring of superintendents by the administrator with the approval, concurrence of the, of the mayor. And the ordinance wasn't written that way before. This is just tidying that up.
Any questions, comments? I'll move that we adopt the second reading of ordinance forty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
For both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Authorizing the Appropriation of Funds of the City of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, we have a capital improvement fund of about, let's see, a thousand? A million four?
Say again.
Sorry, a capital improvement fund, street and maintenance of a million four approximately, and then a municipal road fund of approximately three hundred and thirty-three thousand. And last time, Jim gave a good brief description. Anything else you want to say?
No, those two are both related to the Charlotte Street project. And they will all be reimbursed. We'll receive reimbursements from ODOT, OPWC. There's various funding sources, but we have to spend the money first.
Yep, we'll get it back. Do we always get it back in the same year?
No.
Okay.
But this one we should.
Okay.
Quick question.
All right, yep.
Patrick, we did receive an ODOT grant for that Charlotte intersection, did we not?
Yes, the, we received a five hundred thousand dollar transportation improvement district grant.
And that was the result of the mayor's intervention on that project, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or do we move to adopt?
Both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kind of a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Certainly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three under suspension of the rules?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance fifty dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Authorizing the Vacation of a Portion of Alley Number Forty-Seven from the North Brightway of Rose Lane Street Southeast to the South Line of Lots 3926 and 3936 in the City of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio.
Okay, we discussed this last week, pretty in-depth. There's nothing new that I'm aware of on this. John, you were talking about, you were just at Shale and?
Yeah, I was at Shale and took a walk around. The question about, the only question I would have is the fence. Is the fence going to be between both properties, on both sides of the alley? Or will it be?
Okay, so the, the alley runs north-south.
Correct.
Okay, so there'll be a fence on the north side in the alley. And there'll be a fence on the south side, which will be on Rose Lane.
In the alley.
Okay.
There really needed insights. You know, some of those cars are on that road.
They're gated.
Yeah, it'll be gated. Some of those cars are on that road there. And it could be really a, it, it's an eyesore sometimes. They had cleaned it up a little bit. But by moving stuff back in there, I think it'll be really, really a great, great thing to do.
And they would be gated, as the mayor reminded me, in case you were aware. They would have devices that the fire department could use to be able to get in so that they could respond.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move that we adopt ordinance fifty dash twenty twenty-three.
Revolt moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For clarification, that was an aye.
Gotcha. On helium. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing the Sanitary Sewer Regulations of the City of North Canton, specifically Chapters 921, 923, and 925 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to simplify and clarify regulations of sanitary sewer services within the corporate boundaries of the City of North Canton.
Let's hear that voice, Jamie.
All right. It's like, how do you overgravel, right? So just like we had talked about the, the water ordinances, this is just a result of cleaning things up. We discussed this at length last week, and, you know, I don't think anything has really changed. Any thoughts on this? This, and actually for, to specify, this is for sanitary sewer regulations. So seeing no other questions or comments, I would move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance fifty-one, twenty twenty-three. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance fifty-two dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 929 Storm Sewers of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
Jamie, I do have a cop drop, if you'd like.
I, I think I'm okay, I appreciate it. Okay, so this is pretty much what we were doing with ordinance fifty-one, except this is going to be for storm sewers. And again, we discussed this last week, so any thoughts? All right, I would move that we adopt ordinance fifty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to suspend Council Rule Twenty-three to allow for consideration of what will be ordinance fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three without a committee report?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three?
An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Canton to Enter Into an Agreement with the Stark County Commissioners to Accept and Utilize the Stark County Community Development Block Grant Program for Federal Fiscal Years 2024, 2025, and 2026, and Declaring the Same to Be an Emergency. And for the purpose of the clarification, there was a typographical error in the version in your packets. Twenty twenty-six was missing a two, that has been corrected.
Thank you. Daryl?
For a number of years, the city has participated in the CDBG program. These are federal dollars that flow through the state and down to the county. Typically, they are utilized across the state and in communities for housing and other infrastructure projects. We have taken advantage of the infrastructure projects. This is the contract for the next three fiscal years. Mr. Bureau?
I would just add, you know, you're certainly a sensitive woman, can be about, in this case, you know, passing something on an emergency, suspending the rules to not even have a committee report. But you should explain that we received this, both in the office of the mayor and in the office of the engineer, just last week, and asked that this be done by a certain date this week in order to participate. Now, it should be noted for the record that, as far as we can tell, from the correspondent's look at, this was received by the county in August of last year. So I can't explain that. But what I can explain is that we're condescending it. We promptly got it on the agenda. We're asking, you know, to do what you did tonight, we appreciate that. This is very important to the city. We are receiving funds for these calendar years already that we've applied for. Typically, CDBG has done years in advance. And it's important for us to participate so that we can get, that those funds that were awarded us won't be taken back from us.
I move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three under the suspension of the rules?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to department reports. Patrick?
All right, I have one report. It might take a few minutes to go through. It has to do with the pool. Some of you may have been fortunate to have a subscription to the repository and read an article that appeared, I believe it was Friday. I spoke with Robert Wang on the repository, so I can know. He was just really initially calling to talk about an article that he was writing about all kinds of pools in the area. And as, after we had concluded that conversation, new information came to my attention that I felt obligated to call Robert and advise him because I felt that this was information that was important to get out to the community as quickly as possible. I apologize to council that I was not able to call all of you. Shortly after that, I went out of town, came back, and here we are. So in 2016, the city puts in a new liner slash membering, a reward you want to use, to replace the one that was there before. None of us here, I wasn't here, none of the administration was here at that time. And the company that was chosen was a company named RenoSys, R-E-N-O-S-Y-S. And they were chosen to do this, and the funds that it looked like we paid them split the sum in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. So with this pool liner came a warranty of ten years. After the fifth year, we started experiencing breaks in the liner, which necessitated us to call them. They come out, fix it, great. The next year, year six, happened again. Last year was year seven, happened again. And the breaks seemed more prevalent than ever before. So we contacted them in the fall last year after the pool had closed to come in and affect the repairs. They came, they started, they got a late start, but they were unable to complete the job. The weather had changed, and there needed to be a certain air temperature in order to really do the job properly. They said they'd come back in the spring. Starting in February, the city had reached out to talk to the people about when are you coming so that we can be ready for you, letting them know that the pool is, you know, of course slated to open Memorial Day weekend, as it always has. And we, you know, did not get good responses. In many cases, I would think that we were being, the term that's popular in these states is ghosting. We weren't getting any contact. So as we got closer here into, then March and then into April, we have lots of emails and records and going back and forth, trying to get somebody to talk with us. We were told, finally, that, that someone would be here on May twelfth to start the repairs. And as the week of May twelfth started, we didn't hear anything again. So we thought, well, we better follow up. Are you still coming on the twelfth? Couldn't even get a hold of anybody. Twelfth passes. Eventually, we're going to come to nineteenth. So as we're getting close to the nineteenth, we don't hear anything. And it's like, all right, let's wrap this up. So the deputy director, Catherine Carina, tracked down the president of this company through LinkedIn. We got called and asked for this person by name, got patched through, answered the phone. Hey, this is North Canton, there's our problem. And so that individual got the field representative, the technician who covers us, that has not been talking to us, been ghosting us. Got that person on a three-way conference call, and they said that they would, you know, talk with us and whatever. And so the president hung up, and so we talked with them. The best that he could do is he says, I would try to be there, you know, the twenty-sixth. I can't make, yeah, the nineteenth was over because this was on the eighteenth and we made the phone call. So now it's the nineteenth, you know, it's not going to come the nineteenth now. I'll do my best to try to come at twenty-sixth. No promises, no guarantees. So, you know, here we are this week, it's the twenty-second. Haven't heard from any of them that are coming in. I would be surprised if they came in. And so people are asking, like, well, why don't we just go out and effectively get somebody else to do the repairs? That is an option. That option, though, comes with certain consequences. Our warranty for the pool, if we have someone else do the work, would be voided. Many would respond, what good is the warranty anyway? They're not coming. That's a valid point, that's one that we are, you know, considering. And then from there, you know, we're suffering damages, and there would ultimately probably be litigation over this as a result, in whether or not they're maintaining the terms of their, of the warranty. So this is all being studied by the Law Department, and I've given them lots of files and documents to look at and kind of start researching what legally can we do. And we need to kind of come to a decision forthwith because if they don't show the twenty-sixth, it's just right. And we've already made the announcement that the pool was no way it can be opened. We told initially that if they did come, it's about three days' worth of repairs. We assume that's still to be the case, but we don't know. Two days to fill the pool with water, it's a seven hundred thousand gallon pool. And then three days to heat the water so that it is, you know, fifty degrees. So that, you know, we certainly are missing the first week. And the question is, if they don't come on the twenty-sixth, what's the likelihood that they're going to come at all? And that's where I think we have to start making these decisions around quickly on what we're going to do. Because we don't view it as an option that the pool does not open. We think the pool will open. But we may have to take extraordinary measures. So we'll be working with the Finance Department and the Law Department to craft that strategy out. But you want it to be all a main way. Suffice it to say, if we do get the liner fixed, I suspect that since it has failed the last the last three years, I would expect it to fail again next year, and that we just don't have a good solution there. So we're going to have to start thinking about next year, you know, sometime here in the fall, about what we're going to do about this confidence of development and how we're going to handle that, and start looking at what those numbers might look like and make decisions from there.
Is that a four-rated warranty or is it a full warranty?
A warranty is, I mean, it covers a 10-year period. If they breach the warranty, is that what you're asking?
No, sometimes with warranties, it'll go an extended period of time, you know, it's 10%, 20%, 30%.
If we leave, maybe we'd get a refund?
No, not a refund, but if they go out and fix the liner or whatever, it covers 100, 75, 15. Yes, something like that.
I can't hear you guys.
I didn't hear you either.
So what percentage of that warranty covers the repair?
If it is a covered repair, all of it.
Do we know if it's a covered repair?
No, we do not because they haven't been out.
Yeah. I didn't know since last fall if they were out and they ran out of time. Was it covered then?
That was covered, but that was incomplete work.
Okay.
You know, and it's a significant, because I think I, you may have read in the paper, I mean, it's a significant amount of water that is lost every day, you know, about eight to 10 inches off the top. It's a lot of water.
And if I recall during conversations with certain people. 80% of the people who use that pool don't even live in the city.
That is correct.
Wow. Okay.
That's my report. Thank you for that outlifting message.
I guess we'll be in touch Friday.
Yes.
All right, Gina.
Hey, you could follow that up.
Oh, I have, I guess good news. The utility billing system is live and in action. The first bills will be, well, first of all, the payment portal, the new payment portal, some people have been able to use. It did require a customer identification number that will be printed on your bill that you haven't received yet. So if you want to use it before then, just call in, and the gals in the utility office will certainly be able to help you with that, or it will be printed on your June bill. So the new payment system portal does have lots of self-service options. So there's alerts you can sign up for, or email notifications, or text notifications. You can pay by phone, you can pay with Venmo, you can pay with Google Pay or Apple Pay. There's so many options. We're just really kind of in the new century now, so check it out. Yeah, go ahead.
Have you had many calls about the fee? Is it a dollar or $2?
So the ACH, the automatic payment, is, I believe it's a dollar. And I try, I went on and paid some of the accounts the CIC owns, and I paid six accounts, and it was a dollar. It wasn't a dollar a piece. It was a dollar.
Okay.
So if you have multiple accounts, and those are the transaction fees that the merchant account.
I told them.
Charges us.
I know.
We don't see it, we don't collect it, we don't pay it, we don't do any, you know, we just get users' convenience fees.
That's, that's what I told the person, and she wondered why, or can't, didn't pick up those fees, that like, it's not even an option. I mean, this is just kind of.
Well, we, we can, but then we have to charge it to all customers.
I said.
And I, and we've really vetted through that where some people, it seems the younger generation really likes Venmo and Apple Pay, and those are a different fee. And so somebody with a credit card pays maybe 3% or, you know, there's a minimum fee, and it just depends on what works for you, and the merchant actually has different fees for all of those things. So we just let the user decide, and then the user would have to pay it.
And you can still come in and it's zero fee?
Yeah.
So. That's not new, correct?
It's not.
In my pay, there's always been a fee. We have paid online with the old system.
Yes, there's always been a fee. The fee structure has changed a little bit. It varies now depending on how you pay.
Who I was talking to, they didn't have a fee before, and somehow.
They did.
You think?
Yeah. We did, yeah. We've always had.
Okay.
We, not we.
Yeah, so maybe it went up from a dollar to $2 or something because she definitely noticed it, and before she didn't.
I believe it used to be 2.75% of your transaction total.
Okay.
And now some of the payment options have flat fees, and some of them, like the credit card, still has a percent fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
She didn't have a set. She didn't have one.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
All right, Mayor?
Well, thank you very much. So we've gone from swimming to feeding to.
Feeding.
Now we're going to go to fishing. And I just want to share a few things that happened for me this last week. On Wednesday, May 17th, Mr. Seppi's sixth grade class had a class on, focus on fishing. And we were down at Price Park on Wednesday that day. This is Mr. Seppi and his son Caleb, four years old, expert fisherman, by the way. But we had about 100 students down there from the sixth grade, and here's a picture of myself with one of the contestants down there and another young lady who caught her first fish. But it was a great day with the weather cooperated. I want to thank Brian Hill again. We were able to stock the pond a little bit more for them, but they really appreciated the city and the partnership we have with our North Canton City Schools, and we had fun for 100 sixth graders down there. And they also learned, before this class, for what it's worth, they dissected worms and studied the effects of ecology and conservation and fish and conservation. So it was a good day. On Friday at 2:00, we had a very special occasion over at the Price Park once again. We had the dedication of the North Canton Lions Club Memorial at Price Park, and that was in honor of the 28 past Lions Club members who faithfully served our community in the name of, and representing the motto of the North Canton Lions Club of "We Serve." Now, that memorial was upgraded through AP Quest from one of their members, Don Gray. And Don Gray used to live right over here on Summit, and he would walk there every day, go down to the Price Park path, and he would walk that until he became incapacitated. But special thanks again to Brian Hill, Steve Schick, O'Brien Hill, our superintendent parks, and Steve Schick, his assistant, and of course, Ms. Catherine Farina, our deputy director of administration for coordinating that project. So when you're walking over there on Price Park and you're coming from the Glenwood side, it's a beautiful scenery right there that, that the Lions Club has upgraded. On Sunday, some of you may realize, we had the 2023 commencement, our grads from North Canton Hoover High School. They had 333 graduates, received their diplomas, and 12, having enlisted in the military service already, were recognized. Congratulations to all of them. It was a beautiful night, so the new stadium's looking great, and if you haven't had a chance to get out there, look at all the improvements. National EMS Week takes place May 21st through May 27th this week. And again, this is an annual event that recognizes the extraordinary dedication and life-saving efforts of our emergency medical services. We're very fortunate to have these professionals who work for us at the forefront of providing critical care in, for our community. And I believe our community is very grateful for the care that they do provide for us. Tuesday morning tomorrow, I'll be attending a breakfast representing the city along with our EMS personnel over at First Christian Church for a breakfast for the entire county. If you don't know, the last day of school is Thursday, okay, for grade six through 12. Fifth grade's already out, so fair warning. I don't know if the balloons are still going around like they used to do in the old days with the water balloons, but we'll just be aware of that, so. And I also have an opportunity to represent the city this Friday at 9:00 AM over at the Maps Air Museum. I've been invited to be a guest at the Honor Court, Honor Breakfast, and that's coordinated again by Stark County Common Police Court or General, and General Division. And again, that's a specialized court for veterans and who have been charged with felonies in Common Police Court. But the program is expanded to help them in a number of ways to get through this part of their life and to assist veterans in completing the program that's prescribed for them so that they can have their charges. What's the word?
Dismissed.
Dismissed, thank you very much. And so that's been going very good by our Stark County Court, Common Police Court. And don't forget the senior healthcare at the Y. That's the May 31st, just a little date for you to keep in mind. So thank you very much for allowing me to share those things with you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a question. Is your arm still sore from holding that gargantuan?
Oh, my gosh, no. I tell you what, I baited, I baited a lot, put a lot of worms on, but those boys and girls have never, you know, baited anything, and it was fun to watch them dig down for worms and things like that. The one girl, though, that was the biggest bass that she was pretty proud of, but just about everybody caught fish that day. Yep, that was her.
Didn't earn anything out of it.
And Mr. Seppi, the class, he sent me another thank you again. Couldn't thank the city enough for what we did to help those 100 sixth graders enjoy that day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's really cool.
Yeah, I'm going to frame that one, okay?
Ben?
I have just two quick things. First is that, as you all know, our survey for 2023 began last Monday, and I am happy to report that we have had our strongest ever initial response that I am aware of. We have more than 5% of our total responses from last year already. So as of running, please remember to continue to encourage every resident you talk to, them, their significant other, their neighbors, the neighbor down the street they don't talk to that often, to develop the survey. And then second, since Dave isn't here, I will somewhat assume his role. We had an intern start with us today. His name is Zach Buckler. He currently attends UNC Chapel Hill, majoring in political science and economics, and he'll be with us for the summer.
Very cool.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Let's go to council reports. Shamy, we'll start with you.
All right, well, I was going to tell you about my weekend on Sunday. I mowed the lawn and worked in the yard, and then I had a voice like this. But before that, went to the 720 Market on Saturday, and it was just a fantastic afternoon. I love seeing those types of events there on Main Street. And again, I think there are some detractors out there that talk about the Dora. I thought it was fantastic, long line, and I didn't see anybody acting irresponsibly. I thought it was a great, well-run event, so. And I will stop there and keep, keep my voice for, excuse me, keep from bothering you with my voice the rest of the night, so. But that was it. End of report.
Stephanie?
No report, just, I was at 720 as well, and just great to see so many people in line for the Dora and just all the different vendors. And when I pulled in today, although I see that the geese are moseying back, but it was so nice because there weren't any geese, there were so many people around, and I think it's working, right? I mean, I, I've never seen people use it like they've used it this way. I don't know if you noticed that, Mayor, when you were fishing?
Yeah, no, the fish, they fish. The geese were there.
Okay.
But we do have some residue left on them, and, and, you know, Brian says he's trying to do the best he.
Yeah.
Get that cleaned out. But the geese were down or were fishing, not at all.
Okay.
Not even in the field, down at Price Park.
I see them now when I'm watching. I saw a few kids tonight throwing stones. I almost had to get you as I was sitting here, I was starting to get mad, but I, I think it's working. So I'm great that you put that money into that. It's huge.
Yep.
Oh.
Thank you. John?
Well, this weekend I was out of town, but I was able to do a little work. We went, my, my son lives in Pittsburgh, so we were able to go to a couple of communities. And Mount Lebanon is where he lives, so we went there, Squirrel Hill, Dormont, nice-sized communities, and I learned some stuff that maybe we could bring back here, which is kind of nice. It's always nice when you're out of town, you open your eyes up a little bit and stuff. I'd like to thank Pat, great job on the two properties that were raised in my ward. Unbelievable that the one property, how many acres you think that would be the furlong?
One church?
No, the other.
Oh, the other one, that's, that's like about five acres.
Yeah, that, that was unbelievable. And then for 42, 43 years, that house on Church Street, they, they didn't tear down the house, they cleaned up around it. It, I never knew there was a shed that size behind, you could never see the house. You could never see the house. You know, yesterday I was walking, we got back, we walked down around the park, got to see the dog. They were out there yesterday.
Wow.
And it was kind of neat. Probably last night about 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, they were out there.
Do we have to pay him overtime all on a Sunday?
No, they.
Contact.
It's a third question. No, we, we are contracted by the number of visits.
Okay.
Doesn't matter when those visits are. They coordinate the visits for when they expect the geese to be back. So they do, they've been doing it long enough that they, they know that when they chase them away at a certain time, they're going to come back, but yeah.
The most, the most I've ever seen over there now has been two to three.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and.
It was like six.
The walking track is in great shape compared to what it was.
Yeah. Huge.
It's, you know, it's the second crown jewel of the fourth ward. We also had, last week, we ate at Arrowhead. The food was great, the service was great, that patio is great. If you haven't been there, get there because it is a fine establishment. It should be brown. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Daryl?
Thank you, Mr. President. The record should reflect that Doug Wector has joined us. Doug, I think on behalf of the city and the council, we express our condolences regarding the loss of your father. Prior to your arrival this evening, I offered a prayer in his memory, and the mayor had some really wonderful comments about your father's service and meaning to our community. I would ask that our clerk, when the transcript is available, to send you that so you may share it with your siblings. But Gary was a great guy, sat next to him for a lot of years, and I wish we could clone. Again, our condolences.
Thank you.
Christina?
Just thanks to administration for what you're doing to get the pool open. I agree, to get the pool open, whatever it takes, and take legal recourse after, or whatever we need to do. And then the summer series kicks off Thursday, June 1st, so next Thursday, on the City Hall Portico, partnership of the city and the Hellenberg and the library, 6:00 to 7:30, with their live music every Thursday and food trucks. And then Film Friday, we will be in Whitmore Hark Friday, the following night. Lightyear is the film that'll be showing, free food and activities and inflatables and the library and CSB Bank and Mission View Church partner on that. So there's some fun things coming up.
Awesome.
Cool.
Well.
Okay. Doug, my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. Gary was a great man. I very thank you for the prayers and, and words that you said as well. Mayor. Congratulations to the Hoover High School graduates. I'm trying to think back all those years and.
Don't try.
Was, no. I was, I was looking forward to, I think, my senior trip at that point.
Oh, one of those kids.
Oh, heck.
One, one. Thank you very much.
But, you know, this is, we've returned more to normal times, so it's good to see that activity back and the use of the new stadium stands and everything. That was, that was really cool. My wife got to participate in handing out the diplomas and everything and took some nice pictures, and it's exciting to see that new development there, and it's exciting to see the kids be able to use it for the first time. Buy and support local. Final call for new business?
Go Vikings, the girl softball, did it again.
Oh, yeah.
And boys lacrosse team.
Yep, yep.
Final call for new business?
Meeting calendar, this coming Monday, we will not have one meeting because of Memorial Day. June 5th will be Committee of the Whole. June 12th will be the regular city council with the open topic discussion. June 19th will be no meeting, that is Juneteenth. June 26th will be regular council meeting. July third will be no meeting due to July fourth. And then July tenth will be the last meeting before summer break and that will be a regular city council meeting.
Mr. President, I might say in looking at the calendar due to some of the holidays that are upcoming, I'm concerned that the only Committee of the Whole is on June the fifth and that's it until, it's a back in August, so.
Why don't we double up?
I'm suggesting that on one of those other dates, you're going to, you probably need to do the Committee of the Whole, so.
Can we wait to see which ones?
Yeah.
Where you need it?
Okay.
Give me a chance to.
Yeah.
Work this the next day or two, see where our itinerary is.
Sounds good. Okay.
I forgot one thing, Memorial Day, the North Canton Lions Club parade, it'll kick off at nine, okay? And they'll be meeting again up by the Dogwood Seventh Street area and that'll, of course, go down Main Street to Binsir Park. Then from ten to eleven, we'll have a, a Memorial Day ceremony from about ten to eleven that day, so. Just forgot to mention that to them.
I agree. Thank you. I do have a Lions Club question for you after.
Okay.
When is the mayor's fishing radio?
June third.
June third?
Across the street there. Eat the noon. Think about the twelve-year-old participant, North Canton School District children.
What, what ages is them? The fishing radio?
Up till twelve. I forget what the beginning age is. I don't think we turn anybody away.
All right.
I think it's first grade up, okay? I think that's what it was.
Could be a part for you? You don't even need a license to do it.
They have a keyhole.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?